This is a regular scheduled meeting in Johnson County Board of Education, August 22, 2016. I'd like to welcome everybody good this afternoon. First item is district recognition. It's time to turn over Mr. Sayer.
Appreciate it, Mr. Pat. And I guess I will turn it over to Mr. Castle. I think we want to recognize his high elementary academic teams and things. So, Mr. Castle, I'll turn it over to you and Ms. Hall, I believe.
I'll let Ms. Hall speak. I just want to say I'm very proud of our kids and the work that Ms. Hall and Ms. Conley did with those students last year and the great accomplishments that they had. And I'll let her expand on that.
I, first of all, want to thank, of course, our principal, Mr. Castle, and the entire Johnson County Board of Education, for without you all, what we do at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level wouldn't be possible. So, I do thank you for your continued support, for pushing us to excel in everything that we do. I would like to introduce to you this evening the international champions for the presentation of action plan. They devised an action plan which was entitled "So No Energy." And we're the international champions, right? And they were afforded the opportunity to perform it live for everyone that was in attendance, and it was also broadcast live all over the world. So, I am going to introduce them to you in alphabetical order. First, we have Macy Conley. We have Zoe Curtis, Olivia Eastep, Hannah Peadad, Shelby LaMaster, and unable to be with us was Olivia Spradlin. They worked very hard all year long. They come in on snow days, they worked on the weekends. I know Mr. Castle probably got tired of us asking, "Can we come in on Saturday and practice? Will you open the gate? Will you open the school on Sunday?" But these girls wanted to work around the clock, all the time, and I know that it was, you know, their desire to excel, that's the reason that they won, their desire to work hard. And I, for one, am very proud of you all, and I love you all very much.
Good day.
Stay there. Stay there.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pat. Send this one to Ms. Ross. Smile. Thank you. They had a great reunion back here because three of them have gone on to be with the middle school, so. They were very excited.
We tried for a couple of months getting meeting here because of vacations and everything. It was kind of, you know, so we do appreciate them being here, but now we again, thank you, Ms. Hall, Ms. Conley, everybody's worked with all their parents and things, because as we know, our academic teams put in more time than any other group here in the district preparing for their academic competition, whether it's regular season or, you know, at the state or international competition. We just appreciate everything and each one of the parents, coaches, and our young ladies here, too, for that. Mr. Halsey, you want to give us a little roundup about what all's going on?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Mr. Sayer asked me just to speak somewhat briefly about the high school and the start we've had. We have had an excellent start to the school year, perhaps one of the smoothest that I've had in my career, you know, thanks to the efforts of a lot of folks. We've got a lot of new staff, and they're doing an awesome job. They've settled in, they feel like they're part of our Johnson Central family, but they're doing an awesome job. Wanted to mention a little bit, because this has been the news a lot, at least the school news, about the state's dual credit scholarships and how that there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of information. We currently have with our dual credit classes, just dual credit, where they will receive college credit and high school credit. We have 144 students currently enrolled in dual credit courses, which amounts to about 25,000 worth of that state scholarship money used to the kids had to pay part, we had to pay part, that kind of thing. But that's a pretty good number, and that's only our dual credit. That doesn't include the students in our AP courses or any of those kind of things. We've tried to expand some of those offerings. We have expanded those offerings with our AP. We offer AP classes in essentially every content area. We're doing a college biology, what we call an early bird class at 7:30, College Biology 105. So, the kids that want to do that, they can come in at 7:30 and participate in that. So, we've expanded a lot of that, and we've actually got a meeting this week with Big Sandy and Eastern Kentucky University about them providing some dual credit in the criminal justice pathway, just as we look around us at the... There's a need for that job occupation in Eastern Kentucky, certainly in light of some of the economic downturn, so we're trying to pursue that so that some of our students can get some dual credit college courses in criminal justice up to 12 college hours before they ever graduate. We've been working really hard with our ACT data. Appreciate the board paying for that. Back in June, we administered that to all incoming juniors that were willing to take it. We had 200-plus, we had a good number, to turn out on a summer Saturday, and we've got each child's answers and tests that they took. If they made a note in that book or something, we've got it. And so, we're breaking that down with the content areas and looking at, you know, why did you pick this answer? How many of you picked this answer when the answer might have been this or those kind of things? So, we think that's going to make a significant impact on our overall ACT performance, and I appreciate the board funding that and making that possible. Been focusing a lot on parent contact, community involvement. We've got some plans in place. You know, I looked the other day, and, you know, we're three weeks into school, give or take, and we've had almost 1,000 parent contacts, which is either a phone call, an email, or something, which sounds astronomical, but we've got more than 1,000 kids. So, I mean, you've got to kind of keep that context. But we're pushing really hard to make sure, you know, I had a teacher stop by this afternoon and say, "I just made one more of those positive phone calls," and Mommy cried that she had never had a positive phone call. So, we're really focusing on that. Kind of shifting gears a little bit this Friday, we've got a lot going on. This Friday's also our blood drive, our first fall blood drive. We do four a year, and we push that really hard. Every year, we set records, and actually, our goal is every time we have a new blood drive to set records. And while it is a little bit about ego and us being able to say Johnson Central set records, the more units we have donated, the more potential donors that try to donate, the more scholarship money we get back for our host of students, our health occupation students. So, it's a great thing to donate the blood, but it translates into college scholarship funds for any of those allied health hosts of medical students at the end. And last year, we were the number one high school in the state. We beat out high schools five times our size in terms of the number of units donated. So, anybody Friday, if you'd like to stop by the high school, you know, we target students and staff, and whatever, we'd be glad to take your blood come Friday. Shift gears a little bit and talk about athletics. Of course, we're really early into the athletic season for us, just kind of getting started, but we do have some teams that have been going a while. Our boys and girls soccer, they're both on the road tonight at Belfry for a doubleheader, both off to a really great start. Our boys under new, renew, let's say, head coach Dwight Shafens. They had their first home opener the other night, and they mercied Sheldon Clark. They're a young team, but they're doing really, really good. Our girls are undefeated at this point. Now, they've had three games, they're undefeated. I mean, it's early in the year, but they're doing really, really good, so we want to wish both those teams good luck as they're at Belfry tonight. And then, boys and girls golf, our golf team, I mean, they've just done some phenomenal things. We had, I wish it would have been my idea, but it wasn't. It was the idea of some other folks. I thought it was a great idea. This Saturday, we just hosted here at home our first-ever invitational golf tournament named the Nelson and Kathy Gullett Invitational Tournament to kind of recognize all that they've done, not only for golf, but for all of our students. Had a great turnout, was a great weekend. Mr. Sayer got to be there early in the morning some. Our team won overall by 23 strokes, I think. I mean, they pretty much just demolished, of course, we had the home field advantage, kind of like when we go on the road and travel. But the golf's off to a really great start. We've got some individual players doing some great stuff. Zoe Crim, she's playing some top-notch golf. Will Hedrick's won the last two tournaments individually, so golf is doing really, really well. And, of course, they'll be coming up on state competition here before very long, they'll be in the regional, state. Volleyball has started, volleyball's on the road tonight at Boyd County. They had their home invitational tournament, their booster sponsor tournament kind of fundraiser kicked them off Saturday. They went three and one, they lost a game there just in the playing around and trying different things. But Ms. Haney told me this afternoon, she said, "That may be the best volleyball I've ever seen a Johnson Central team play." She's got some big hopes, because that's saying something. We go back a year or two, we think about, we've got one young lady playing Division One volleyball right now, and for Coach Haney, say, "This may be the strongest team I've ever had." Of course, this Friday, our ECC Bowl, be a big week, all week, as the activities leading up to that. Friday will be a big night with the R E C C Football Bowl. Come out and join us. We take on Capital West Virginia. You know, we're 2-0 in preseason scrimmages right now, get some pretty good competition. This Friday night may be the best football game in the eastern United States. I mean, Capital West Virginia's about our size, they're out of Charleston, they've got about 1,200 kids. They were state runners-up in West Virginia last year, we were state runners-up in Kentucky. They're ranked number one in their state now, we're somewhere in that top, depending on whose rankings you look at. And along with a good night of football, we've got a car show. I think it's going to be bigger and better than even last year, more vehicles involved, the pre-game activities and games, and write some pre-game music at the Chris Stapleton at the Eagle Stage out back there. So, you know, we've got a lot going on this week, and I'd say, you know, come out and get us. This Friday, for whatever reason, we seem to have a lot of deer meat left over among us outdoors people at the high school. So, about 3:30, the tailgating Friday night's going to begin with all wild game meat. So, if you'd like to stop by and get a deer steak or something, we thought we'd try to do something different, maybe clean out the freezer. But I want to say thanks to Superintendent Sayer, all the district staff, that's been responsible for a good start, maintenance, you know, food service, everybody's been right there, especially the Board of Education for everything you guys do to support our students. So, thank you.
Appreciate it, Ms. Conley. Again, as Mayor Maynard, our elementary season's also kicked off with an elementary football. That's off to a good start, as well as girls' basketball, that's going on tonight, that's so. Appreciate the coaches and teams, everything and that. Mr. Eastep, also wanted to mention, his daughter plays her first basketball game tonight, so he didn't want to miss it, so he did. I'm telling him, that'd be fine, he'd go see it, but he'd want to talk about the middle school just a second or two here, and of course, you know, they've got football season going on, and girls' basketball also. We hope, both of those teams are undefeated in their competition, so it seems like everybody's off to a really good start here at Johnson County Schools, of course, with the weakness of the pressure.
I'd like the kids to slip out on us.
I was getting ready to say, I was going to tell them, they'd feel free to go if they want to after that, but I guess Melvin will turn it all back to you.
I'm sure I can speak for the board. We're just so proud of these kids and teachers, coaches, everybody that's involved in making Johnson Central a success like ours. Thanks to all of you people. We really do appreciate it. All right, we can start it here now. Item number three, approve the minutes from July 25, 2016, regular meeting, bills and payrolls throughout the state in 2016.
And if I could add in there on the motion, the minutes to the special meeting on all this, the fourth, I did attach it, I just did not include that in the motion.
Okay. May the motion be approved?
It's only a second.
All in favor? Item number four, written paper. Scott, you want to break these down, or you'll do them all in one motion?
Page, wherever your pleasure is.
All right. I should break them down, then.
First one is a payment to Architect, $5,433.25. We still owe him about the same amount there, if we close down the project at Flat Gap. Things is going real well out there. We, as a school system, have stayed out of it to get into any, you scratch the paint or I scratch the paint, so we're trying to avoid that. They are basically done the project. The architect will be in later this week. I talked to him this afternoon, and he will be in to give us final approval, go ahead. Punch list has been done and completed, we hope. But that payment, I would recommend you pay the $5,433.25.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second on the floor, all in favor? Anybody? Oh, motion carries. Item number four, B.
The next one is a payment for a contractor of Frederick Bay of $204,553.40. That leaves them a balance to finish the job of $101,804. And basically, all that is, is the blacktop over there that we're waiting for dry weather. They've been there once or twice already, and we just can't get the right weather. Bo Cook's been out, his people have checked it, and we're just, that's all we're waiting on. But the architects approved it, and I recommend you pay that bill as well.
Can you raise some comments? Motion approved? Motion second on the floor, all in favor? Anybody? Here it is. Item number four, C.
Four C is a change order for some cameras and licensing at Flat Gap. Actually, we've done pretty good on this job, and I think this is only the second change order, we brought it before the board. The total of this is $12,000, and of that, your engineer has agreed to pay part of that, he's agreed to pay $7,990, so Johnson County Schools is not fitting the whole bill for this. It's kind of an agreement we came to, we felt like that was partially a fault, so we asked them to pay for it.
So, it's four grand.
Roughly, yeah, rough number. That leaves you with about $91,000 in contingency money, so we don't anticipate anything like that coming up.
Motion two approved, Mr. Chair.
Second. The motion second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number five, old business, final reading, approve the policy and procedure update.
Tell that Sarah can hold me here, so I don't have to step in. You know, last week, or last month, we gave you the first grade of the policy and procedures, and again, they've looked at the K S V A and attorney and things, and yes, try to leave the legal law, what legislature did, everything, it should be good to go unless you all have some questions about.
Any questions? Motion approved. Motion second on the floor, all in favor? Here it is. Item number six, new business, border notification data security, Chair was all good.
Recently, there's been some KRS statute changes in regards to district sharing data with cloud providers. Mr. Sanders reported, you know, in regards to approval of certain things in regards to what would be considered student data or sharing with providers and with more of the user product. Also, should be in your packet a copy of the MOA that we're asking all providers, whether it's a paid service or a free service, to sign off on, that will help protect student data in the event of a data breach, you know, notification steps. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer for you, or point you in the right direction to find out.
This is for information on another, can be approved?
No, no motion, just we're required to notify the board each year by August 30.
I've got one question, Charlie. Do we have documents, physical documents that have social security numbers on them? Do we keep them?
That, I don't know. I know social security numbers are kept in the campus as paper, I'm not sure.
Probably, we do have what would be locked files here for office for employees and things. That's, again, that goes back to all the requirements and for audit and things, they come in, look at a packet, make sure. We better have that number for, you know, our federal things that we do, so this gets under lock and key upstairs.
Anything else? Item six, B, approve Kaybeck, boy, I've been bringing them for Andrew Cass, who's been in the safe.
As you know, for the last three years, Andrew's been with Kaybeck, done a great job over there with them. They're asking the Prince of Kinder Services for the 16th semester school year, and we ask you to approve his leave to work with them this school year.
Motion. Second. Motion second on the floor, all in favor? Anybody? Item six, C, dress participation, changing musics.
Miss Music couldn't be here tonight, but her school is wanting permission to write the Read to Achieve grant and the math grant. They have both of those operating in their schools, in their school right now, and they want to continue that.
Actually, we want to do that across the desk.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
That's how we treat that, so. Sam, you're just going to represent all the principals at that, so.
Motion approved. Motion second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item, approve academic and athletic fall schedule, Superintendent Sayer.
You'll find them attached to your minutes and things there, we just have to approve those, basically because some of those do have house state or overnight trips on special academic lines. Again, we need more approval to do those for academic teams, our athletic teams.
Motion. Second. Second. Motion second, all in favor? Motion carries.
We got Noel. We got Noel, we did, I left Noel out there for a minute, because he'll go back to him. You know, we talked about last week, Karate, Tech Your Work Ready Skills grant initiative was due last Friday, and Noel's going to speak on it. He spent a long time, the last two or three weeks, working on this grant, and I really do appreciate what he's done. I'll let Noel speak on it. We don't know where we received it yet or not, but we put a lot of time and effort into it.
It wasn't for lack of effort.
No, it wasn't for lack of effort.
Okay. I want to give you this, but I'll explain it before you get into it. Basically, what the process, I mean, at first, I'd just like to say that this was an awesome group effort, and not just from people here in our office. I mean, we had some meetings down here with all of our district staff, but we also had Barb Hugh from Carly Perkins, who came to every meeting, didn't miss one of them. We had correspondence and talks several times with Paintsville, both the superintendent and Brian Hocksher, and working with them on this. And we had 21, I started a copy, I'm going to bring it down here to you all to see, we had 21 letters of support from different companies, agencies, educational institutions. By far, the greatest collaboration, and I've been part of a lot of grants, but this is by far the greatest collaboration of different entities and people that I've ever been a part of in a, in an application, especially one that we took responsibility for ourselves. I mean, you know, we were fortunate, like with Kaybeck and KDC, to be part of large grant opportunities, but this is something that we sought out ourselves, and then we, you know, Mr. Sayer actually solicited, solicited, you know, trying to get some more people to jump in and be a part of this with us. So, basically, just in a nutshell, what I've done for you here is, I've just taken the narrative sections of the grant so that you all can actually have a good understanding of what, of what it is that it's about. Just real quick, I can briefly explain it for everybody else here. The governor set aside in this budget cycle $100 million for workforce readiness, because they feel like, and it deserved really so, Kentucky is behind in our work preparation program, there's not been money put into that in decades. So, this grant was unique in that usually grants never allow you to apply for facility money or land acquisition, anything like that. I mean, usually, you can only purchase equipment or training or sometimes personnel, you know, things like that. This grant was specifically set aside to say, "Hey, look, you can build a building, you can get equipment, you can do..." It was very wide open in terms of what you could ask for, as long as you were addressing the five primary industry sectors. And the state goes through every, I guess, a couple of years or so, and the Workforce Readiness Board, they actually designate where's the greatest need in terms of employment. So, the five priority sectors, and I, they've got all technical names, but basically, let's see if I can find them in here, whether they're written by them. Health science is the primary one that connects with us, and let's see if I can find where they are in here, the way they spell them out for you all. Oh. I missed them two or three times in here. Oh, okay. Yeah, your other areas is construction and trades, you've got advanced manufacturing, you've got the medical, health and wellness area. You've got, what else? IT, business and IT service, and transportation services. That's your five major sectors. Our application was kind of unique because that where we already have a really solid technical program set up, where we offer, you know, such a diverse set of majors, we were able to put our application crafted in a way that we addressed all five sectors. Most people that applied to this were only addressing one, maybe two sectors. So, from our stance, and this includes everybody, like from Carly Perkins, they already offer a lot of these, but she's really wanting to reach out and connect with us because we do have a large disabled population. Well, Carly Perkins attracts students, they have students all the way from Graves County, she was telling us. So, you know, they're a statewide facility, but we don't have very many people from our own community that are actually utilizing it. So, we're going to try to partner more through this, you know, if we're lucky enough to get this grant opportunity, to be able to have some of their students use some of our facilities if we get, you know, this grant opportunity, and some of our students to be able to go over there and take part in some activities. Paintsville was looking to improve their IT programs because that was, they have a limited number of opportunities, but IT is one of them, and they got a space that they wanted to renovate and be able to expand those programs, so that's what they're asking for. But from our standpoint, what we need is a new technical facility, because we are the only county in this, of all our bordering counties around us, and even in the 15th region, that does not have a dedicated center, facility for technical courses. You know, we offer them, but they're inside our high school, up in nearly 50-year-old high school building, and we're trying to make shift to do that. But if you go to Floyd County, they have their own ATC, Martin County does, McGoffin County has their own building, High Cass, too. So, you know, if you look around, you know, you see that other places have that, we don't. So, that is a huge need that we have, so we felt like it gave us competitive advantage for the grant. The only problem we got is that 115 applications were turned in. They were supposed to let us know by Friday if we would get past the pre-application stage. Then, they put an article out Friday afternoon saying that the governor's office, which I don't know how they could have thought this or misestimated this much, but apparently, they thought they would only get 10 to 15 applications across the whole state. Instead, they got 115 applications for $500 million total. They only have $100 million, and they've already got requests for 500 million and 115 applications. So, they obviously didn't have time to go through the screening process in one week, so they have not given us the timetable on when we will hear anything. But, you know, I still feel like, money aside, I think we got the best application that we could possibly put together. I mean, as far as just the fact we had so many people involved in it, it was such a good collaboration effort. The money obviously could be, I mean, we're asking for $14.9 million. You know, we hope that, and we know that that's to cover every possible need when it comes to what we can look at in terms of a facility right now. We may not get an offer of that, but hopefully, maybe we'll at least get something out of it, you know, in the end, and we can at least expand and offer the programs that we would like to be able to offer to our kids, so. That's kind of in a nutshell. You all have any questions?
This is the biggest one we've ever applied for?
This is the biggest grant that we've ever applied for. As a district, I mean, the, our ARI is a $30 million grant, but there are 17 districts. Yeah, this is the biggest one I've ever been a part of directly, yeah. We've gotten, yeah, it's huge. But it's very rare that you get an opportunity to ask for facility, you know, in a grant, so I mean, that's what made this one unique and why we decided to go in and ask for it all, just to see, you know, I mean, we might as well, because I mean, I don't think anybody's got a greater need than we do, and I think we can back it up with the fact, we're equipped to take off and go with it, because we have staff who are very capable, they're already trained in these areas. I mean, we've got a top-notch health science program, but we don't have the facilities to, right. So, I mean, we're doing things, I mean, matter of fact, when I was in Louisville this summer in July, I had the interim director come up to me, plus the project lead, the way director, both come up to me during this meeting when they heard about this and said, "You all got to apply for this," because they've been to our building before, and they're amazed at what we offer in our facilities. And they're like, "We don't know how you're able to offer this." And we have engineering programs where we're, got them in a small classroom with computer lights, where you have to turn, you can't hardly turn around in the room for them to do their work, and the nursing, you know, all those classes.
Who's pigs?
There's a nine-person committee that will screen these applications. There's a nine-person committee that will screen these applications. Now, they didn't go on to say if they will actually select the winners at the end, I alluded to that, but the committee is made up of, the governor appoints two or three, the speaker of the house appoints someone, the senate majority leader appoints someone, someone from the workforce investment board is on it. It's specified as to who the, the maker is. I haven't gotten the list of the names yet. I've tried to inquire to see if we could find out who the names were, but I don't know specifically. I just know that the, in the law, when they put it out, they specified how that committee would be comprised. But our hope is that they'll try to spread it across the state, and considering that other districts have facilities, hopefully, they would look at the fact that we have such a huge need. Plus, we're working with our other partner in school district and the rehabilitation or the vocational training center, Carl D. Perkins, to try to work together. So, I don't know. Hopefully, we'll get somewhere with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Next item, approve on community use of facility, Sean Castle.
This is the Van Hoos reunion that has requested and used our facilities for multiple years in the past, and this year they're wanting to do it. I believe it's just on the Saturday prior to Labor Day, so all their documents, insurance, everything we have is up.
Good. Motion approved. Second. Motion second on the floor, on paper. Item six F, approve STEM scip, uh, science tech, the adoption, and so here's Sean Fett.
Yes. Every year we get a, we'll call it a meager amount of textbook dollars, never enough to buy a complete program. And so, we, but our textbook dollars cannot be spent on anything but instructional resources, so we don't ever lose that money. So, we've been saving some of that money. Math was the last set of books that we got to get about four years ago. Our science books that we purchased were back in 2007, and so they're, they're pretty outdated. But we have found a program, I will say Ms. Sawyer has found a program. She is a part of Pimzer, which is, they, they stay right in touch with the latest and greatest across the nation of what's, what's best out there. And so, she had been corresponding with them, and we found a really, really strong program called STEM Scopes. It goes right along with the next generation science standards, and it goes right along with technology. It's a, it's a computer, it's a digital program, but yet it's a textbook, it's resources, it's strategies, it's, it's just all rolled into a really, really nice package. The cost of it is, is $174,000 for a six-year period, and we will cover that through our textbook funds that we have been saving up for the past few years. And then Title II, Pam's program, will be paying for some of it, and then Pam also works with professional development, and so we will make sure that we get the proper training in using this program. We had somebody come in over the summer, and we had representatives from every school. We have two of our teachers here today, Charlene Owens and Robyn Halsey, that have used it extensively. And Charlene actually writes questions at the state level for the area of science. So, these two are very, they, they know what's needed, and so if you want to say anything about it, now's your, now's your chance.
I just want to say that I've been doing, studying NGSS, the next generation science standards, for the last four years extensively in lots of groups, and this is the best program I've seen to really help all students from kindergarten up. And then I did get the chance to write some questions at the state level for the next assessments that will be coming out, and this program will lead straight to the better test scores, I think, even with that, because it is, it's just that good. It hits all aspects that we've been looking for.
We had a trial period to use this, Pam set that up for us, and the teachers, they, she, they sent her back some, just little quotes about, and comments, and, and they just are absolutely embracing it. And I think that Pam may have given you all some snapshot of what the teachers are thinking, and maybe even some pictures that came from the students at Central Elementary. Miss Cl, Miss Halsey's classroom. So, with all of that being said, we can take care of the, the program itself, but with this program, for it to be implemented the way we want it to, there's some consumable materials. Our, our funds can't cover consumable. These are some kits that come along with this program, kits to make it successful, like any, anything that you would need to make, to do the activities in it, like maybe sandpaper, you know, the, the things that you have to replenish. So, Pam worked on a budget, and it would be about $77,000 for us to carry this through. And I'll just leave you to speak now.
Just to add to that, when Charlene says that she's worked in numerous groups, she's worked at regional training, state-level training, and these girls will be the first one to say, this was a lot of work to drill into the new science standards. Those are STEM practices. It was a lot of work. It was difficult work, and there were no resources up to currently that even addressed the new science and engineering model. When we saw this, the only good thing I can say about those four years of hard work is that they all went, we already did, we did so much of it that we understood what a good product should look like. So, I've got to compliment our district teachers, and especially the leaders like Mark Lufter and Charlene Owens and Ms. Triplet and Mr. Halfworth, because they had given it their total approval before we even came to you for the request of funding.
So, when we buy the program with our textbook dollars, that's for a six-year program. That's going to cover us for six years. The money that we're asking from you, that would last us at least two years, maybe even three, depending on how the replenishment of that would go. So, tonight, we are asking for you to approve $77,000 so that we can make this the program that we want, as good as it can be.
Yeah, whatever, to the, yeah.
A dollar or penny there, so.
You know, if you get that far with this guy, we'll be happy. We'll be happy.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion second on the floor, approve on paper.
May I ask what the whole total is going to be for that program?
It'd be $174,960 plus the consumable amount of $77,780.
Did you get that, Pam?
And even with that, we're saving, because we're purchasing it now, we are getting a savings of $80,000.
Your pricing goes up in September.
September 1st, probably.
So, you know, I talked a lot, but I have to tell you, if it wasn't for our science and math curriculum specialist here, she found it. And that's, I mean, she, she went out on a limb to find such a great program, and like she said, as soon as we saw the guy talking to us about it, all of these teachers, like, this is what we've been waiting on. This is really what a true modern STEM program would look like.
So, we've got all these material up front, set aside somewhere, is that what we do with the STEM?
Yes, we will make sure we keep, yes, yes.
It will be.
They're a kind of four, $20 investment for science future for our state of John County School.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Item six, you, coal bid.
Since our last scheduled board meeting, we had a bid open for coal. We had three bidders, and the big committee ran against the low bid of Embry Energy.
What was their total bid?
$101,000.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Motion second, approve on paper. Next superintendent personnel report. Item number eight, recess, conduct a, conduct a public hearing on District Facility Plan.
All right, Mr. Martin.
All right. We need a motion to recess, please.
Motion.
Before I start off, I just want to compliment everybody in this district of Board of Education, you guys, super good people working here. I'm sure that's no surprise to you. I've been around to many, many districts across Kentucky, and really impressed by the professionalism of everybody here in this district that I've met, so you have a lot to be proud of here. Welcome to the public hearing. Pardon me for having to read this. I have to do it a certain way for KDD to approve that, and I need to turn on my recorder here, so, okay. There. Welcome to the public hearing. It's Johnson County Kentucky School District Facility Plan. My name is Don Martin, a hearing officer and consultant with the Kentucky School Board Association. There is a sign-in sheet in the back, and we really need everyone that's attending this hearing to sign, board members included, because I have to attach that to the hearing report. This hearing is to comply pursuant to 702KR 4.180 implementation guidelines. The local Board of Education has submitted the proposed draft of the facilities plan to Department of Education. This accepted proposed draft facilities plan is to be reviewed tonight in the local board public hearing. The local public board of hearing is for the purpose of hearing and documenting testimony. The hearing officers to document the public comments. The highlights of the proposed plan are, we can get into detail if you want me to, but I'm going to read the, just the highlights right now. Priority one items, a new Johnson Central High School. We have heard on several occasions, both from, from the people on the committee and outside people, and even here tonight, of how the great programs that you have here at Johnson Central High School could be even better with a new facility, and probably a new facility is the only thing that's holding you back. So, the committee wanted to make sure that a new high school is on a priority one on the new facility plan. Also, priority one would be renovation addition at Central Elementary School, and number three would be restroom renovation, renovation at Johnson Central Middle School. The priority two items would be renovation addition at Flat Gap. Number two would be the renovation addition at Highland Elementary, also the renovation addition at Porter, the same at Castle, and move eventually the Johnson Central Middle School into the old Johnson Central High School building. There are no priority three projects, those are additions, non-academic additions to the facilities that are not part of other new construction or renovation projects. Priority four items, a new central office, new central storage, and new bus garage. Following the testimony and upon the conclusion of the hearing, I'll submit a report to the Johnson County Board of Education for approval during tonight's scheduled board meeting. If accepted, the local Board of Education votes for the approval and submits the final proposal to Kentucky Department of Education. If rejected, the local board submits a letter to the department for review. The local board will then be asked to submit a letter to the local planning committee that gives specific direction as to the board's concerns and intent. This will be reviewed by the LPC. The plan will be adjusted, returned back to the board for their review, and is submitted back to the Department of Education. The final proposal is scheduled to be submitted to the state school board in their October 2016 meeting. At this time, we will hear testimony related to the plan. Either oral or written report will be accepted. Does anyone have anything they would like to address to the plan? Now's your time.
Well, I'll tell you, I would just like to say that as part of the committee, I commend you on your organization and the way that you structured meetings, that you were informative, you brought everything to the table, it was well-presented, it's been a very thorough process.
Okay, thank you, Noel. Much appreciated. Any other comments? If not, I'd like for the record to show that no one else provided testimony to the District Facility Plan hearing report. So, at this time, I'll turn it back over.
All right. Need a motion to adjourn the hearing?
Well, you need, I think you need a motion to adjourn the hearing report on the District Facility Plan, if I'm not correct, Don.
Yeah, but you're going to have to give me about.
Get this meeting, get the poses.
Before we come out of the meeting.
They have to come out of the hearing, so need a motion to come out of here.
I need a motion to come out of here.
All right. Motion second, come out of the hearing.
And if you give me about five minutes, if everyone has signed the, the sign-in sheet, there, there it is, and there's a few things I have to put on the report. Tom, I'll just, since everybody has a computer, I will send it to your computer, Valerie. I don't think you'll have to print it this way.
Okay.
And then, if you could just forward it, can you do that?
Do it.
To, to the board members, and then give me a couple of minutes here to, and then you can approve it over your computer.
I'll be there.
Valerie, count, Valerie, count how many is here, please.
Twenty, you would make 21.
How are you going to send that?
See if I got too many, sir. On the link.
Now, what do you want? Happen after he pulls it out?
He can shoot it to their email, or we can print it either way.
I don't know.
How do you want? If they see it, they're going to hear it.
I don't know.
Can I?
Jordan. Can I just, okay. You're slamming it over the phone, but it's.
And the, the name itself.
Williams, why I sent you all last?
You're right.
You've got, you've got hard copies in that, too.
I guess the secretary and office report on district plan is approved.
Motion accept. Take the motion.
Motion second, on paper. Motion so carries.
Like to make note that my son's favorite teacher is in the room tonight, Mrs. Halsey.
How that plan, I appreciate everything, maybe you are, that'd be only October's favorite. Good, good.